Schools Board of Education meeting to order. Ms. Harrington, can you call the roll?
Mr. Aldridge.
Here.
Mr. Cooper.
Here.
Ms. Iyer.
Here.
Mrs. Russell.
Here.
Dr. Seadman-Lowellson.
May I stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, safety briefing, same as every meeting, out the door to the left if we have to exit quickly. Uh, and Ken.
Had a bug.
Sorry, I'm sorry, I can't watch that.
I went for a while. You guys done?
Yeah, we're done.
Uh, need a motion to adopt tonight's proposed agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Harrington.
Mrs. Russell.
Aye.
Mr. Aldridge.
Aye.
Mr. Cooper.
Aye.
Ms. Iyer.
Aye.
Superintendent.
Thank you, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the last meeting of what is the Educator's Summer. Also, as a point of clarification, I sent you all an email before the meeting in case anyone saw the agenda out there in the public. I was gonna propose to amend the agenda to add a Millstream contact on a program that we're really excited about, but we had to press pause to take a look at some components of that. We'll try to get it on as soon as possible. Just briefly tonight, Mr. Cooper, just wanted to take a moment, as we will again in August, I'm sure. Just wanna thank our custodians, maintenance, grounds people, for all of the work and all of the projects that they've been doing. Long hours, sometimes on the weekend, responding to things that sometimes we discover along the way, and, but also the routine maintenance and cleaning of our buildings. I just always wanna celebrate that team for all of the hard work that they do. A lot of it goes unseen, but it is absolutely appreciated by our students and staff on day one when we, when we all start coming back, so just wanted to thank them. I also wanted to give a shout out to our summer lunch program, which is going on at Glenwood Middle School for the county, not just for the city students. We have a little bit of a visual up there today. I spoke to these three ladies a week ago, and they were so energetic, and they said, "Keep getting the word out, we're here until July 31st." They, and it is free for everyone under eighteen years old. Twelve thirty to, I'm sorry, eleven thirty to twelve thirty, Glenwood Middle School, and it'll go through July 31st. And they, again, they were so proud of the, the programming that they're doing. Sometimes kids from the Y get over there and other various community organizations, but we just wanna continue to celebrate the work that is done there for those students. The last update that I have for the, this particular meeting, as many of you may have seen, the, the House voted today sixty-one twenty-eight to override Governor Dewine's veto on item sixty-six, which restricted some of the certain types of levies that are out there for public schools. The veto override's now gonna go to the Senate for consideration, and they need twenty votes to override. Mrs. Harrington, the things in this particular item, I don't believe directly impact Finley City Schools at this time.
Correct.
Okay.
We do not have.
We, we do know that across the state, some districts and some districts, I think, right here in Hancock County are gonna be affected by the vote that took place today, but again, it has to go to the Senate. Little bit of a surprise, the other two items that were potentially gonna be voted on, item fifty-five, expanding the authority of the county budget commissions, and item, sorry, that was fifty-five, and item sixty-five, revising some of the twenty mil floor calculation, looks like they tabled those. But they do have until December thirty-first to take those off if they're gonna override those or any other items that the governor decided to override. So just keeping the board a little bit updated as best Pam and I can with where things are. Again, we're so proud of our own community for stepping up and doing their job back in May to support Finley City Schools. We're gonna continue to be grateful for that, continue to make sure that we're earning that trust and, and doing our part, you know, with, with those funds when they, when we fully can collect, but we still have some uncertainty around the state budget, just a little bit with these floating items out there, House Bill three thirty-five, and then, of course, the federal dollars. I was briefed this morning by the team. I believe we still have not had those dollars drop yet and been released. I know that we definitely have some people out in DC urging those appropriated and approved dollars to be sent to public schools across the country, so. That is all I have, Mr. Cooper.
All right. I did have the opportunity to go to the summer lunch program with the fire department, and it's pretty special to see the kids coming in there, and they get the opportunity to come out, check out the fire truck too, so.
Oh, that's fun.
Treasure report and celebrations.
Right now, I would like to, I just wanna extend and thank you to everyone for all their support here in the last few weeks. I do have exciting news with an assistant treasurer coming on board, Kristen Johnson. She's not here this evening. I do wanna, and, you know, introduce her when she can be here sometimes. We approved her at the last meeting, and we're very excited for her to start. She comes with twenty-three years' experience, so that'll be exciting. You know, we've been, we've kinda held off on that position for over a year, so I, I'm just really gonna be excited to have her join us. I would also like to thank the following for donations, and again, with great appreciation. The Class of nineteen eighty-five, College First Church of God, we had an anonymous donor, and Rich and Marion Leonard, and again, just thank you so much for these wonderful donations, and we're great, I'm very grateful that we live in a community that supports our schools.
Can I say something else about one of those big donations?
Sure.
Okay.
I don't know them.
You talked about the one hundred, yeah? Yeah, there it is, there's the photos. I just wanted to add to that, thank you, Mrs. Harrington. Millstream teacher, Tom Burnworth, attended a summer training and connected with an area representative from Trac who supplies many manufacturers with equipment, of course, and through this connection, he was able to attain these two pieces of equipment, valued at over one hundred thousand dollars. So we just wanna thank them and thank Tom for all of his work on that. That was an incredible, incredible donation for our kids at Millstream.
All right. Board reports and celebrations? Anybody?
I, I heard this morning on the radio that the Stuff the Bus campaign is going to start this week. It's on, starts on Thursday at the McDonald's on Tiffin Avenue from six o'clock in the morning, so Thursday and Friday, six AM to seven PM, and Saturday from ten AM to noon. Please drop off supplies for our kids. Ever, all the supplies and all of the money that is donated goes to help students in Hancock County. It does not leave the county, so you can count on your donations staying local. And it's really important for our kids that need a little help with some supplies to get that. They especially want backpacks, but whatever you can drop off would be deeply appreciated, and just wanted to make sure I mentioned that.
I just wanted to give a shout out to the music programs, the camps this summer, that I know Krista Bigger was instrumental in Ren One. I'm sure there's other people that I'm not mentioning, but I thank you for doing those. Young, young group, middle and a little older, and then they do a performance on a Saturday that I attended, the two older groups, and it is just, like, I wanna be in it. I mean, it is so just exciting for them, and they're very energetic, and the songs are just the right songs for kids that age, that get 'em moving and dancing, and great, great summer program, and that is open to all kids around here. It's not just Finley City Schools. I love that all kids are invited and included as a possibility to come and do this. So that was great. And then I did attend the FFE, and they had a great garage sale season. They had their sign of twenty-four thousand dollars raised in the garage sale, and I attended their summer program that also, honestly, the auditorium was very full, and a lot of energy and a lot of excitement going into this next year. So I, you know, I love all of these programs, but these two I got to, and thank you to the Coolages, Krista Bigger, the people who are willing to work the summers and do some of that work and get the kids excited, so, thanks.
Ms. Aldridge?
I would just say the athletics are starting to kick off too, which is great to see all the kids back and participating in those programs, and I would also reiterate all the awesome work that our maintenance staff is doing, getting the buildings back up and ready to go for the school year. Other than that, that's all I got. Any committee reports?
Not for this meeting, no.
Public participation, any employee representatives? Nobody, students, I don't see any students. They're all chilling for the summer. Parents are public? Awesome. I need a motion to approve draft minutes from the special meeting on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Harrington.
Ms. Iyer.
Aye.
Mr. Aldridge.
Aye.
Mrs. Russell.
Aye.
Mr. Cooper.
Aye.
All right, moving on to.
Yes.
All right, go ahead.
So at this time, we're going to do a public meeting on the reemployment of Daniel Pack. At this time, we are conducting this meeting for the reemployment of Daniel Pack after his retirement under the state teachers' retirement system in the position of teacher. Those attending this meeting will now be afforded the opportunity to comment on such proposed reemployment of Mr. Pack. Do I have any comments or concerns? Okay. Thank you.
Moving on to Board of Education consent items. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Do you have anything on that?
Just, just some heads up that you've got before you tonight, some travel proposals for athletics. The golf tournament in Michigan and cross-country is doing a retreat again, so we're excited about that. I am very proud of our athletic department for continuing to look for ways to build team culture and get some experience, not only across the state but across the region. You also see a food service contract there for Head Start in St. Michael. One update, that the meal price increase by Sidexos is for adults only, not for children, not for students, and I think it goes up to like four seventy-five or something a meal. And then we already touched on the public hearing. That's it, thank you.
All right, any discussion on those items?
Just a quick one on the cross-country. Is, is this the whole team that's gonna be going, I'm assuming, for the cross-country?
The running retreat in Rushville, I will have to find, find out.
It'd be great if it, if it is.
Yep, I will find out for you.
So do we provide food service for any other, other schools besides Head Start and St. Mike's? I was asked that question recently.
I don't believe so.
No. Just, so these are the only two that we have a contract with?
Yeah, it's the only two.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Any other discussion? Ms. Harrington.
Mr. Aldridge.
Aye.
Ms. Iyer.
Aye.
Mr. Cooper.
Aye.
Mrs. Russell.
Aye.
Moving on to the discussion item. Activity fee discussion.
Yeah.
Did you wanna kick this off?
Thank you, yes. I just wanted to touch base with the board, maybe for this year, one final time, going into this first semester, around the activity fee. It did come up at agenda review, just kinda where it stands, and one of the, it was a proposal coming out of January as a, as an option to introduce a pay-to-participate fee. Worked with a team of people, got feedback from the board. In fact, if you recall, we had a work session around it. I had some of those people attend, got the feedback from the board, and then the final proposal a couple of months ago was just to consider, like, no middle school fees and then flat fees, instead of different tiers and that kinda thing, and the, the final with, because the board also said, you know, how many kids are participating in the various activities that we have across the board, and so one of the, you know, if we were to go the route someday and take a look at, you know, a flat fee for each activity that a family does with some level of family cap that pulls in, you know, north of a hundred and fifty to maybe a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, that range, depending on the year and the number of participation and how many, how many caps we would have in place, or a flat fee unlimited, just like, say it's a hundred dollars, unlimited access for a family, that's around a hundred thousand, based on the numbers of the last couple of years. We can also look at fifty-dollar fees, those kinda things. My understanding in talking to many of the board members is that, you know, there's some challenges around this. We know that we would be one of the first, if not the first, in the county to go that route in our area, certainly not across Ohio. And it is something that, there's no action to be taken tonight. It was just for discussion. I was just looking for any, like, in terms of where I put my energy and, like, focusing on, is this something that you would like to see move forward at some point, someday? And then I want to, at some point, then, look long-term, like, because we have some pretty substantial academic fees, and, you know, as we diversified our revenue stream there, and then someday, you know, my recommendation will be to continue to explore options around activity fees, because these are the extras that we're so proud that we offer, you know, our kids in the performing arts, clubs, and of course, sports, so. Just kinda wanted to see, you know, take a temperature check with the board, and then I'll know what to do moving forward.
Any comments, discussion?
I, I'd like to comment, just so I can have my comments on the record. I did send these to Dr. Hatton in an email, but I think it's important, 'cause I've had several conversations at, you know, social gatherings I've been to since we first started to talk about, just to generate some discussion among friends and, and neighbors about this, just to get their feelings and, and their, their input from it, so. I think explaining why I am, remain unconvinced that this is a good idea is important, so people can know why I, I'm, I'm not supporting this. I would not support it if we did vote on it. And primarily it's because Finley City Schools is landlocked. The, the city, I don't think people realize that the, the city borders, as they grow through annexation, the ci, the city, the, the Finley City Schools' boundaries do not change. We are, we are locked in, we're hemmed in by the, the districts that surround us. So the city grows, the district does not grow, and in fact, through our own research, we've discovered that the population within the bordering, within the border of our district is actually aging. We're getting older, and we don't have a lot of unbuilt-on farmland to add housing for young families. Where our surrounding districts do, so they're growing. They're, at least their, their border districts are growing. So none of our surrounding districts have a pay-to-participate plan. The closest is Bowling Green, and we have very little interaction with Bowling Green. Our current district strategy has been to offer exceptional opportunities. They're special, they're excellent, and they're different from what our surrounding districts have. And that, that strategy is only successful if we are equally successful in attracting and retaining students from outside of our borders to come in and play those, participate in those activities that aren't available in their home districts. And so we have kind of a symbiotic relationship with our surrounding districts in that regard. And we need that level of, of participation in our school. Because of our enrollment has been trending downward for a very long time and a very slow pace, but to be able to continue to offer these special, unique opportunities to the region, we need that, we need that interaction from outside students to come in and, and help. We also need students to participate in more than one activity. We need them to participate in many activities in order to provide, you know, to continue, continue to provide these activities. Creating a financial barrier to entry without, doesn't provide much benefit, mainly because of our own decisions. But if we, if we make that barrier higher, we're going to have less participation. And then if we have to pay a stipend or hire somebody to administer this process, then it has absolutely no benefit, and it only is a cost and a barrier. So for me, the only thing that would be a starter would be to have, like, a flat fee that's low enough for us to be able to administer easily, and also would encourage parents to, you know, get a return on investment for that one fee that they were paying. But I don't even, I don't even want to support that. That's the only one that might make sense. And I think the bottom line is, we just passed a levy, and that levy was a big ask for our community. I don't believe it's the right time to ask for more. I think we have to tighten our budget. We have to tighten our belt. We have to reduce our costs. We have to live within our means. We have to see where we're at with the state, federal, local money, before we do anything else associated with something that I believe will add a barrier to students participating in our activities. That's, that's why I am not in favor. I haven't talked to anyone yet that has convinced me otherwise, and when we engage in conversations and I explain these things, they don't realize a lot of these things. And that's where we're at.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
I would agree with Mrs. Russell. I think the timing is not right. We just passed the, the levy, and we, there's a lot of pieces, a lot of moving parts to be able to understand the impact of the, the levy dollars that are coming in and the timing of those dollars as well. So we, there's some additional pieces that we gotta better understand, and along with, even if we do have a, just a fee that's associated, how do we manage that? We're gonna have another layer of putting responsibility on somebody to try to manage those dollars. Who, who is going to pay, who's not gonna pay? Is there a refund if somebody quits playing a sport? I mean, there's a lot of pieces that have to take place, and, and there's a lot of things that we really don't understand, especially from a, a financial piece of where we're at, you know, after the levy. And from a resourcing standpoint, from Dr. Hatton and his team, we've got a lot of other pressing issues from, from my opinion, when you look at even busing, you know, there's pieces there that we need to spend our resources on to try to bring busing back as soon as we can. So from that perspective, I think I would prefer, and what I would be voting against having this additional fee, would be, we've got resources we need to put in better places.
You have anything?
I see it very differently. I see, one, that it was part of the package in the beginning that we talked about as a board and as a community, that these were some of the things that we needed to do this time around. We talked about it at many different meetings. We had a work session, we had a team we put together to help us, you know, with some feedback on what was the best way to go, and they offered multiple options. I absolutely think the flat fee is the way to go. I don't think it's complicated. I don't think it will cause a lot of resources. At minimum, I believe it would bring in a hundred thousand dollars, and as we talk through other things we wanna do, that's money on the table. We're asking people to pay academic fees and fees in other things. I think this participation fee is right. I think it is the right time. I think we do need the money, and it will help, help offset the cost of all of those expenses associated with those groups. And I believe our superintendent has recommended it and has asked for some support on it, and I support it. I, I think it is money that we do need, and we've talked about this. So in my mind, we follow the plan, and we stick to the plan, and the plan was to look at that. I think it's a flat fee, minimal amount for this first year, see how it goes. We have no statistics on people dropping out or not joining. We don't know anything about that. We don't know if that is prohibiting anybody, and I think we can work on those case by case if that becomes an issue. That's my comments.
I just offer my input on this. I, I certainly understand Laura's point of view and, and respect that, and we talked about six million dollars in cuts for quite a few months, and we are also operating without passage of a levy, and really uncertainty with the state and where, where we were heading with that. And as we start to unravel the state budget and where we figure out where we stand financially going into next school year, I would really like for the district to focus their energy on things that are super impactful, like busing, and when we can execute getting some busing back to kids and not prevent that barrier to our schools, and how soon we could roll that out, if we can roll that out prior to the end of this next school year. A hundred thousand dollars, you're right, is, it's a lot of money, and we've always been a district of opportunities, and I don't wanna create any additional barriers for our, our students in our district, so. Not saying this can't happen in the future. I think we should explore it when the time is right. In my opinion, we have a whole lot more that we have to deal with first, and I would not support it if we were gonna vote on it today. Doesn't mean I wouldn't support it in the future. I just believe that we have other issues that we need to take care of first.
That's what I needed, thank you.
Moving on to Assistant Superintendent of Personnel and HR Consent Items, I need a motion for item A.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Did you wanna comment before we have any discussion?
I think we have to read something. We are looking at another retire-rehire, and this is just to put the public on notice for Dr. Kennedy Maori to teach a course at Millstream. So this is where we read the statement like we did last month. But, and then at the next meeting, we have the, if people wanna come participate, so. Is that in your?
Yeah, I got it.
Yeah.
The superintendent recommends approval of the resolutions giving public notice for consideration of the reemployment of Mary Beth Kennedy Maori, whereas Mary Beth Kennedy Maori retired under the school teacher, teachers' retirement system effective May twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, and whereas she was last employed by Finley City Schools at Finley High School as a teacher at an annual salary of ninety-three thousand, six hundred and forty-six dollars and fifty-seven cents. And whereas, the board wants to consider the possibility of employing Mary Beth as an English teacher at Millstream at a rate equal to step five on the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six teacher's salary schedule for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year effective September nineteenth, twenty twenty-five at their September fifteenth, twenty twenty-five board meeting. And whereas, in accordance with Ohio Revised Code thirty-three oh seven point three five three, the board must hold a public meeting between fifteen and thirty days before reemployment, and whereas, the board must give not less than sixty days' public notice of such reemployment. The board hereby gives public notice that it will take public comment on such reemployment of this retiree at its regular meeting on August eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, at six PM at the Admin Building, eleven hundred Broad Avenue, Finley, Ohio, four five eight four oh. The public's been notified.
That's right. Thank you for reading that, and that's all for item A.
All right, is there any discussion on item A? Ms. Harrington.
Mr. Aldridge.
Aye.
Mrs. Russell.
Aye.
Ms. Iyer.
Aye.
Mr. Cooper.
Aye.
All right, I need a motion to approve item B.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Harrington.
Mrs. Russell.
Aye.
Mr. Aldridge.
Aye.
Mr. Cooper.
Abstain.
Ms. Iyer.
Aye.
Moving on to Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning Consent Items. Item A. I need a motion.
So moved. Second.
Just the, you know, still, we have some more, um, Science of Reading Professional Development reimbursements and just, uh, some other items there around, um, summer work, so. We're just moving forward and prepping for the school year.
All right. Any discussion from the board? Ms. Harrington?
Mrs. Russell?
Aye.
Ms. Iyer?
Aye.
Mr. Cooper?
Aye.
Mr. Aldridge?
Aye.
Treasurer CFO Consent Items.
Well, now it's my turn. So, if you'd like a copy, we have copies of our financial packet available for anybody in the audience. Or feel free to email me at phararrington@fcs.org if you need a copy electronically. So, our meeting, we do have a meeting, you know, our Finance Committee met on July eighth, and we reviewed our typical, our normal, what I call, routine reports that we're liking everybody, 'cause we wanna be very transparent, so you can see progress each month or differences, so that you can question it. So, we do our cash reconciliation on, uh, I'm, Kelly, I don't know if you wanna call this stuff up yet, just yet, but we do our fund balance report, which was backed by popular demand. Um, the general fund report is, um, another one that we are still reviewing. I still get some questions on it, because they're like, what, I'm not sure what this means and that. So, one of our next, um, goals for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year is to do a triple T. on how to read that report, or treasure talks, you know? And so, I do think it's important that, just because you see the numbers, you might not understand what they're, where they're coming from or what they represent. And so, without some narrative on it, I think it's hard to understand. But we ended exactly where we thought. Next. That's just the general fund. These are all our other funds. Um, I get questioned a lot about, well, so the general fund has this, where's it, I don't see the athletics, I don't see this on there. If, that's because they're not in the general fund, which is Fund O-O-One, but this is all the other funds that we maintain. And, uh, again, that just shows you the beginning balances, month and, you know, monthly in, monthly out, where we are, how we ended. And we also now have started including the encumbrances, as that does obligate us for that money. It's not money we have available to spend. So, um, one of the other ones, this report, it looks a little bit funny on here, but I did wanna explain. We are going to do what I call a complete, um, year in a lookback, I call it a year lookback for the fiscal year twenty-five. I think we owe that to the community, since we, um, passed our levy and they were very supportive. We wanna continue to share everything that we can with them. We had, in November, we had one forecast, in May, we had another forecast, and we ended in June with this forecast. And I don't think it's fair to not explain each and every one of those lines. So, I would like to do a presentation, um, in August to do a year, but I want the Finance Committee to be on board, 'cause the first one I did was rather lengthy, and I'm not sure that we need to, to make it so long that people really don't wanna, I don't wanna lose them in all the, in all the deep, that, you know, the, I, in too much information. But we did end right where we thought, with, we were thinking six point six million after encumbrances. We ended with six point six million forty-eight, so we were very close, within fifty thousand dollars of where we thought. In a seventy-million-dollar budget, that's pretty good for, that's just the one fund. But that's the main fund that we pay all our operating and our wages and things from. So, I was, um, you know, we, we keep an, uh, we run this every Friday, and, uh, my staff does a great job helping try to close out as many purchase orders as we can, but as you know, we're, we're adding the addition onto Millstream, and we're doing some projects. We have a new operations director, and we're gonna work with him and, you know, try to get some of the, uh, utilities and things in line. And, um, so we just had a few more open purchase orders than normal, so we are working to get them closed out quickly. So, in August, we would like to have a little more time during the meeting to, uh, do a presentation on our year, a lookback. And then next, I think really that was pretty much for this meeting. We did, uh, we did go over a few budget transfers and things like that. But I did wanna just, I'm starting to, you know, come to probably the last eighteen months or so of my career, so I thought, I'm gonna do Pam's tidbits for each meeting. I didn't even share this with Dr. Hatton yet, so.
I'm excited already.
So.
I'm on the edge of my seat.
Okay. You guys all look a little worried. What do you think I'm gonna say? Okay. Someone recently asked me, why do you and why did you spend so much of your talent in public schools and always are pushing and talking about needing more funding? Well, my short answer, less than an hour answer, 'cause I fear you guys don't wanna be in here, 'cause it's nice outside. So, the benefits of increased funding, I thought about that a lot. Can possibly lead to improved, improved academic outcomes, right? Higher test scores, graduation rates will be better, college attendance and all those things. And be a smart investment for our state's economy, right? If we have good schools, everybody's gonna come here. But I said, nope, those are all good reasons, don't get me wrong. But that's not the most important reason. I was just raised a little bit from a family of a lot of teachers and educators, and as corny as it may sound, at the end of the day, the children are truly our future and our most precious cargo resources. It is my personal belief and not anyone else's that they're the most important thing in the world. And that's it for tonight. I just need approval now. I guess we never.
Well, first, I'll just say that I am looking forward to the August meeting.
Okay.
And we need a motion to approve.
Yeah. So moved. This is, okay.
Second, please.
Second. Does, does further discussion? I'd, I'd like to point out on the, I don't know if we can go back to the, the, uh, balance of funds report, which is the...
Blue one.
Blue and light blue. That's one. So, one thing that's, I noticed on this, and Mrs. Harrington and I discussed it, um, before we got into the meeting, there's a lot of negative numbers here on the ending balances for the federal grants. Um, and, and what, how federal grants work, just so everyone's aware, is you have to, well, we have, we have an agreement, we had an agreement that we could spend this money, okay, or we wouldn't have spent it. And, and so, we had to spend the money first, and then the process is, after you spend the money, then you go back to the agency that is allocating that money.
Yep.
And you provide documentation, and they submit the payment, you know, they, they make you whole.
Yeah.
On what you've spent.
And they review to make sure they're qualifying expenditures every month.
Yeah. So, we, we have to request it ahead of time, qualifying expenditure, we spend the money, and then we provide documentation, qualifying expenditure, and we get the money. So, we're closing the books. I mean, if you add up all those line items that are negative on there, there's a significant amount of money that is still showing as negative here at the end of our fiscal year, and that's affecting our balance, obviously. And, um, and that's unfortunate, because it seems that we have an excessive delay currently in getting paid back. I have, I'm not gonna s- make any statements on why that is. I'm just letting you know that those negative amounts, we have been promised through our agreement with the powers to be, that, that we should be reimbursed for those. So, that's one thing I wanted to point out. The second thing I wanted to point out is that the ending balance at the top of the general fund, which is the main fund that, thank you taxpayers for providing operating levy to help that line, that's the line that it goes to, that's the bucket. We are ending, um, with an, with an, with a, taking the encumbrances out, about six point six million dollars. And you'll hear a lot in the news about this carryover balance, and you wanna make sure that your districts aren't carrying over more than forty percent, or that's a bad thing. We're carrying less than ten percent over. People say, oh, well, that's really good. It's really not good from the standpoint of, of how much, what our, what our budget is and that we're carrying over less than ten percent. We are really, really thin from a financial standpoint. I mean, thin to the point where it's scary thin. So, so I want to make sure that I said something about this, so everybody in the district knows that we need to, if we don't have to spend money, we shouldn't. We should be making sure that we are, we are staying, that we are, we're gonna have a
Tight budget.
Tight budget, and that we are at a, a point in which our general fund is at its lowest, because we are then going to begin collecting on the new operating funds at the end of first quarter, after the end of first quarter next year. And it's only a small amount, and then it grows from there over the next eighteen months. So, please keep that in mind. We are very, very thin. Just 'cause we passed a levy doesn't mean that, oh, you know, rainbows and unicorns are popping out. It means that we are still in fiscal constraint until we start getting some of that cash flow. Okay? Just wanted to make sure I point those out.
It's very difficult for people to understand, how can you be so negative? But it's, it's the higher, it's the way the federal government, you have to spend it first, prove that you spent it. Let them review it and say, yes, it was proper, and then we'll pay you.
And one more thing is I noticed somebody using the beautiful bike trail that goes in front of the high school on the way in. We did not pay for that. Finley City Schools did not pay for that big, beautiful bike trail out front. We did not pay for it.
And it's really nice.
It's very nice.
They did a great job.
It's very nice. It's a, it's, it's through the city, okay, but it is part of their, their, um, trying to create a bike trail. It, there's lots of, I'm sure, grants associated with it, but it's a city, a Finley project to essentially create a bike trail all the way from, I think it's Walmart, um, all the way through to, like, Riverbend eventually. And if you haven't been, I ride bikes. I love it. What they're doing is a great idea. Um, there's, the pieces that are not connected now are really painful, because you realize they're not connected. Um, but it, it's needed. It's, it's great for, there's a lot of people in this community that, that ride bikes, um, for their transportation. They're riding it. I ride for recreation and for transportation. There's a lot of people that, that is their primary mode of transportation. So, it's important for us to have a safe way for people to travel, um, west to east, east to west in our fair city. So, um, like to see that, but I just wanted to make sure I pointed out, 'cause you always get that, you know, like, very beautiful. The bike trail is a city project, not Finley City Schools. Thank you.
Uh, I'm glad you brought that up. I don't remember which meeting it was that we discussed this, but O.D. came in with the city to, um, uh, get the land to be able to, uh, execute on the grant. The grant that they're using is the Rails and Trails Grant. Uh, so yes, we are not paying for that. I had that, uh, question today, so I forgot to bring it up. I'm glad you did. Uh, but we are not paying for the awesome concrete bike path out there. We should get some trees out of it, hopefully. Any other discussion?
I'll be you.
Mrs. Russell?
Aye.
Ms. Iyer?
Aye.
Mr. Cooper?
Aye.
Mr. Aldridge?
Aye.
Mr. Cooper?
All right. At this time, we have no executive session, but I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Ms.? Mr. Aldridge?
Aye.
Mr. Cooper?
Aye.
Ms. Iyer?
Aye.
Mrs. Russell?
Aye.
We are adjourned.